Put the light on the mic. Thirty seconds. Thirty. Fifteen seconds. Go ahead, Steve. Ready, Dan?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 3rd, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any minutes to approve?
No.
All right, we'll skip those.
Wait, we do have. January 9th?
January 9th.
Do we do them tonight or next week?
Two weeks.
There was a misprint in the agenda. Said January 9th, 2024.
Oh, that's fine. We'll skip.
All right, we'll skip that. No additions to the agenda tonight. We have one appointment, Judy Eisman, Chair of the Pelham Planning Board, and her comments on the MWRA Quavon feasibility study. So who wants to go first?
So I was contacted by Judy a few weeks back about the Quavon feasibility study that was conducted by the MWRA. It was a mandate from Aaron Saunders and Representative Conover. And after reviewing the presentation from the MWRA and the report, I had a lot of concerns. I just think the manner in which the study was done and the report was prepared was not conducive to a favorable outcome for anybody. One thing in particular that I didn't care for was the fact that they expected communities, local communities, to pay for an extension of the infrastructure and pay for the water. It just seems that they had no responsibility for the fact that their watershed is located in all of our communities. There's 12 of them. And they're really not taking any ownership of or are giving us any credit for what we do to protect those watersheds and move forward. So when I was contacted, I said, sure, why don't you come in and we can talk a little bit about it. The MWRA did want comments back by January 30th. So I did send a letter to the MWRA with the same comments that I received from the town of Pelham with a few extra little jabs in there. So I'm hoping that we get some response at some point.
So with that, I'll turn it over and let you have your few minutes.
Would you prefer if I came up a little closer?
If you don't mind.
Let me tell you a couple of things. One is that MWRA has not indicated when their next meeting is going to be. So the January 30th deadline was sort of tentative. And we will let you know when this actual next meeting to discuss the feasibility study is going to happen, and we'll hope that comments, yours are already in, other towns haven't gotten them in yet, which is okay. Let me just tell you a little bit about me. I normally chair the Pelham Planning Board, but I at one point chaired the Conservation Commission and have served on the Water Supply Protection Trust, representing Swift River Valley Historical Society. So I'm fairly familiar with how MWRA operates. And this, and I'm also working with Senator Conover and Representative Saunders to ultimately pass this legislation that's in the works. Getting comments in about the feasibility study is particularly important in order to let them know that the towns are paying attention. They don't want to provide us with any money or assistance. And the legislation is going to do that. And it will be helpful to all of the towns who have varying needs. You know, Pelham prides itself on having been really protective of the watershed because we're watershed-free. Belcher Town, Shute's Berry, Amherst, the Quavon itself, Springfield, and we haven't developed because we understand our land first, and we know that there should be places that aren't developed in town. Other towns have different things going on. And so we want these comments to be specific to the towns because the study was not. It was really a poorly conceived study. So that's the first thing, is we want to get their attention and get those comments out, and then go to the meeting when they tell us it's going to happen. We expect them to give us maybe a week's notice when they decide it's convenient for them to meet because it's not a public hearing. It's actually going to be a public meeting. And then we want to be ready when the legislative hearings happen so that we write comments on the legislation and get everybody, all the towns and other towns, to understand the values that we provide individually and collectively for the eastern part of the state because they don't pay a lot of attention to us unless they want something. It turns out, slight snide comment. At any rate, those are really the three things. I have, if you're interested, I happen to have the comments that Pelham Select Board wrote, which Steve had, and the Chair of the Petersham for Road Comments herself, without talking to the rest of the board, that they intend to. Shute's Berry is preparing some. All of various towns are working together on this. And Senator Conover expects to hold a meeting because the town Hardwick is trying to get communities together and individuals to meet. So this is going to be an ongoing process, but the first step is actually to get those comments in. And I'm certainly glad that you already have done that. But I just want you to stay tuned and know that I'm working with Lexi Dewey, who's the recent Executive Director of WISCAT, and Bill Pula, who is our Health Board Chair, but we all work with the Quavon Health District. So you know, we find that these connections are interesting. You know, people that I've known when I was working with MACC. You know, I've met people a lot, so it just kind of fell to me in talking with Senator Conover that Lexi and I are well-positioned to go and start talking to the Quavon towns. So that's what we're doing. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them if I can. Or just to let you know I'll be sending information as I get it about what meetings are going to happen.
Any questions from the board?
How did they do the feasibility study?
When did they do it? Why?
Yes, and wow, what was their method?
Well, when Senator Conover filed the legislation the previous year, this was their response. It was, okay, we'll study and see what needs to happen. And they spent money doing a study that didn't give us really the kind of information that each town would need to begin with. I at one point sent the draft comment. Do you have those still? Because I may have.
Yeah, they're in the back.
That's okay. So, you know, I figured you had been doing it. So they did, they did the study. We went to, some of us went to the first discussion meeting and looked at it and said, not real helpful, thank you very much. We want to start making sure you're paying attention to us. MWRA makes a great deal of money every year from reselling water. They have very few restrictions on how that water that comes from here is used. They don't have lawn watering restrictions, for example. So all the time that we're trying to keep the Quavon full, they're sending the water out to everybody's lawns and then into the ocean. I mean, you know, it's sort of irritating when you understand how this stuff works. So we really need to keep some pressure and some attention on the fact that we are paying attention. That's how that board works.
So the comments are on page 29, but one of the things that was pointed out was the consultants doing the study didn't spend enough time compiling data. We had a long brief meeting.
There was one meeting scheduled to talk to all the towns, one day.
Yes.
And they didn't obviously talk to anybody who knew the details about communities. I think that was.
We have a lot of coordination because the Water District is separate. But we also have the Bonsville Water District in our south end, the Amherst Water District in the north end. And there was no opportunity for coordination, for communications. It was just a brief, what a unique kind of meeting, and there was really no thought put into any questions. Lack of financial understanding. You know, they didn't even take into account that there's a water treatment facility right on the Belcher Town-Ware boundary that we could tie into. So these are things that are just minor flaws, but they add up. And cumulatively, they just leave a lot of questions in my mind about what their true intent was. So I think we need to keep it on the table with them. And, you know, we have needs for water. We know that the Water District's wells are starting to reach capacity. The growth in Belcher Town has caused a lot of that. And, you know, I think practices as well with, like you said, irrigation of lawns and those kinds of things. But what's more important about that is if we don't work with the Water District to correct this, it is going to limit our ability to build new homes, redevelop the state school area because we need to have water. That's critical. So it's something that I am going to continue to follow. The other piece of legislation that is important is the restitution for the land. We currently receive pilot payments from the state. They're far less than what that property is valued at. The MWRA land in Belcher Town extends from the end of Jucka Hill Road all the way into Pelham Gate 8, Peckerville Road area. And I can tell you that Jucka Hill has views to the east on one side of the hill and views to the west on the other. They're all view lots. Belcher Town is approximately 50% developed in land area. There's 3,190 acres that the MWRA has set as off limits to the town of Belcher Town. And based on some very rough math, if that was developed at 50%, with the average household being a little over $4,000, we're probably losing $9 million in tax revenue. So that is significant. That would solve a lot of problems if we had that. And I think we're better for not having it. It's a great reservation to have. It's a great amenity to have. But the state needs to compensate us fairly for that as well. So that's my speech.
Well, that's pretty much my speech too, but I figured you could make it. The thing is that the values that each of the towns provide really in the time of climate change and all the other things that are going on, we have to be aware that Pelham could have looked like, you know, Belmont or Arlington if we had developed heavily, and that would have impacted the Quavon. You know, half of our town was already taken away. But if we hadn't understood what our land values and what it did to have the forest and the water supply protected, we could have done something quite differently, but we didn't. And I think that the folks in the East don't totally understand that. That it's not all about the money, really. It's about protecting fresh air, clean water, the forest, the habitat, you know, all of that.
Has there been any initial talk of the second piece of the legislation getting reparations for this? Has there been any talk as to whether or not that's going to pass?
The second part, you mean the trust fund or the pilot? What, this is my personal thought here, is that the pilot payment stuff is really long and involved and complicated to try to open that up to get new pilot payments. It may happen, but that'll take longer than getting a trust fund set up that could provide a good deal of money to each of the towns every year to be used at their discretion. Not simply for water, perhaps, because that isn't what every town needs. But what are the, Pelham needs money for its schools, for example, or some other things. But it is trying to bring people, each of the communities, into a position where they are justly compensated more than they had been and without necessarily working on the pilot payments right away.
Is there discussion, like, do we know early on if it's looking like something like that is going to pass?
It's pretty early because Senator Conover just refiled the legislation so that it hasn't come to the point of a hearing yet. But that's what, that'll be the next step. The comments that you've already sent in for the feasibility study, big help. Stay tuned and stay ready to run into Boston if we can do that or at least be scheduled to make your comments about the legislation when that happens. That's really the next step.
How can we get the word out more to, I mean, we also facing deficit issues, and this would really help. So how do we activate our residents and your residents and all of these residents to be aware that this, a lot of people don't know that this is even on the table?
Well, you know, a lot of people in the East don't even know where their water comes from. So there we are. But, and that sort of is the next step. We, you know, the first thing is just to get, you know, the local officials aware, and then we'll be talking about that. Senator Conover, I think Aaron Saunders is also very willing to come talk, that'll help. We'll probably have to do some flyers and all the usual things, and we'll have to be planning that. I know that, you know, this, getting town officials other than the Select Boards involved, I think your ConComs, the Planning Boards, Recreation Commission, there's all sorts of people who are already involved with town, letting them know will help. But we'll work on that. We haven't got that far yet, the actual plan to disseminate the information. That's it.
Yeah, I can, I can get the legislation up on Facebook and ask people to support it with the legislators.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you for talking to us about this today.
Thank you for letting me come, and it's been a pleasure to commute you into the conversation. I think we're going to have good times making sure this happens.
I just want to ask a question. I know we're going to work locally on education, but then ultimately is the plan to educate more Bostonians as well? As a former Boston resident, I knew the water came from the west. I didn't know where, and now I live there.
Yeah, I know. It's, we know that there's Tanglewood out there and then California.
Yeah, and there's a massive amount of water. But will there be plans to educate people out in Boston?
I think that is the intent.
Because advocacy will come from them.
Yep, yep. And I think that's part of what's going to be happening because Senator Conover is working with other officials out there who understand, who get this. There's some good folks out there. I mean, I tease about it, but I have relatives who live in Boston area too, I know. But yeah, I think that is, you're right. Everybody has to just become more informed about so many things these days.
It's not just up to us.
Yep, yep.
But thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. 5A, the Rec Department's Resident and Non-Resident Survey. Welcome back. Kyle Tebow.
He needs a walk-up song.
So tell you what, why don't you tee it up for us and pretend this is the first time we've heard about this?
So the document we have in front of you is the survey that we hope to put out that's more up-to-date for the Belcher Town residents. Like Ed stated, a resident and non-resident survey. I do have to thank Lori Shan, who is one of our pickleball instructors, that helped kind of piece this together. This is kind of in her wheelhouse of things as she works closely with data and surveys. So she helped kind of facilitate this for me and kind of go through the process to make sure we hit certain things. And that, part of the reason I'm here tonight is to, you know, show you what we came up with. There are a couple of little things that I want to get your feedback on because I know there were concerns from before about how we're hitting certain demographics and certain questions on how people may view them when they're taking this. So basically, what we did is looked at the 2016 survey and a couple of other local surveys more recent and tried to piece together the survey that you see in front of you strictly specifically about, obviously, Belcher Town and our Rec Department for our residents, and then some questions to focus on, obviously, specifically non-residents and what draws them into Belcher Town. The hope is basically to take the finished product, turn it over to the Collins Center, who's doing the study for the Human Services here in town, have them facilitate the platform that the survey would be on, and then from there disperse it amongst the town via all the avenues of websites, Facebook pages, QR codes, et cetera. I had brief conversations with BCTV Manager Esther and the Communications Manager of Kate. And then I did reach out to Jessica from the Senior Center there so I can kind of present something over there and have the avenue of some of the seniors that utilize our Senior Center to take part in the survey as well to try to have as many demographics throughout town, not just the younger families that are involved in youth, to try to expand to everybody and try to get as many responses from this as possible. After that, the main goal is obviously to take the data that we collected, compute it, have a final report, and then also compare that to the 2016 survey where it's applicable because obviously there's some things that are now obsolete from that 2016 because we've made improvements since then. And then just kind of use this new survey as kind of our blueprint on where we should focus on moving forward with some of the things with the rec programming, some of the space, and projects in the future. So that's kind of what you have in front of you. There should have been an updated copy in the packet today because there was a clerical error that I caught earlier and fixed that for that piece of the puzzle. If you look through the survey, the two main things that were kind of discussion points that I met with Steve and discussed part of them. The first one is obviously, when you get to, it's on page two, the one that talks about the Belcher Town Rec Department is continuing to make improvements to facilities, use of open space, et cetera. We list some different ideas there. I know one of the concerns by Nicole last time was when we put out specifics that maybe we're making them choose those specifics. So one of the questions that Lori and I had discussed is kind of leaving up to the board of what the feedback is, is do we leave that open-ended and let them fill out what they think their needs are? One of the things with that that makes it a little more challenging is some people may leave it blank. Some people may write their own idea, which is fine. That's what we want, their feedback. So it can work either way. There's no wrong answer, if you will. But I know that was a concern of if you only put four or five things, then are you really getting what the entire community is looking at or looking for? So that's one of the questions I kind of have as feedback of what you would like to see as a resident, as a board for the community, specifically that question. And then one I know that was brought up is on both of the Resident/Non-Resident Survey is basically the last two questions. One refers to if they rent owned property in Belcher Town and the income threshold, what their household income is. You know, even with that, talking with Steve, you know, do we need to have that in there? Is that going to help us to look at who we're servicing based off of income? We could use that to use point being really specific. Out of the X amount of people that were participants in this survey, they fell in this threshold of income, and we can use that for grant purposes rather than just always the median income that is for the town of Belcher Town. So once again, those are two main pieces that, just looking for feedback or guidance on what you would like to see because one of the things that Lori did point out is when you start talking about household income, it is a sensitive subject for some people. Some may leave that one blank. That's why she put it towards the end of the survey. That way, if they left it blank, they would hopefully still hit submit and not just push the survey aside if it was question number one right out of the gate, if you will. So those are the two main areas that I'm looking kind of for feedback. And anything else, obviously, you have as far as that. But like I said, we modeled this off of the 2016 and some recent local surveys that were out there.
Good. Any questions from the board?
So next to each of these different activities, they're going to have to put a percentage in?
So that, so depending on the avenue that the Collins Center may have for their threshold, yeah. The last one, what it was, it was kind of like a drop-down menu. So how much do they use, you know, the program indicate to what extent? So if they play basketball every year for their kids, it might be 100% or 75%. So there would be a drop-down or a selection going across, depending on how the software that they have would facilitate that. And that's how they did that in 2016. So Lori thought it was important to keep it the same so you could compare the data similarly, then come up with a different avenue. But that would be the plan, yes.
Did she say how long it would take for the average person to complete the survey?
So I think everyone's different depending on some of their answers because what, once again, some of them, we do have, leave it open-ended or listing the additional programs. But that was one of her concerns is someone taking this survey. You don't want to have too much for the reader's eye, if you will. And even with that, I was a little concerned of, you know, we have a lot of programs that we're listing here for the youth, and then the adults, a little bit less. But I asked her if that would be a deterrent. She didn't feel it was because those are specifics to what programming they may be looking for. But to your point, we're trying to make it user-friendly and not a lengthy process. So people will fill this out, and we get as many surveys back from different participants and different demographics throughout town.
Yeah, so that, actually, you answered where I was going with this because I don't want the list to be too long. But then I also thought to myself, do certain things like skills workshops? And maybe if this doesn't fall under Rec Department, just let me know. But like, things that came to mind for me, like knitting and sewing and photography and all these different adult skill, unique skills workshops, could that come on to here too?
So that could. That's not currently what we have. So I think one of the sections she said is, please list any recreational programs not provided that might be used by your household. So like, it's kind of hard because in years past, I gathered a list for Steve out of what we've done throughout the years. We have had a sewing class for the younger age group with the kids in the summertime. And then that person kind of stepped away, and we don't have anyone to fill that. So to your point, I have no problem adding more. It's just a lot of what you see here are things we currently have that we're offering. But I'm not opposed to adding another, or maybe being a little more detailed. Anything you don't see within the list above, please list what your household is looking for or would utilize because that's how we're going to build more programs and hit more of the demographics that are not sports-related.
Yeah, I mean, these are all physical fitness-related. So I was just kind of thinking outside the box to things that weren't.
Some of that may actually be covered through the efforts of the Collins Center. So what's happening is we were awarded a grant to study Human Services, which is Veterans Senior Services and Recreation Department. The Collins Center has been commissioned to do that work. They're a division of UMass. So they're bringing in a team to work through that evaluation. As part of that, they're going to do a very comprehensive survey. So they're going to have their team of professional survey workers prepare this document. So what they wanted from us is the draft so they knew what kinds of questions that we were looking to have answered. They're probably going to add more to it. The reason why they want to combine this into one is because they don't want survey burnout from people. So it will come back in front of the board. So I think it's probably as simple, when I send this to them, to say that we want to include some adult skills, you know, type of things.
That was, I had that question because you mentioned the Collins Center. So like, is the Senior Center programming going to be incorporated? Or is it separate? Or like, you know?
It will be, yes, yep.
So, you know, because they might have knitting and sewing and those types of activities.
So we pulled the last needs assessment from the Senior Services Department. We sent that to the Collins Center already. They're waiting for this, and then they're going to start putting it together.
May I ask a question also? Thank you, Kyle, for coming back. I know you put a lot of thought into this. So I would really appreciate that we're asking, are you a Belcher Town resident? Are you not? Are you coming in and taking advantage of our services? I think we have a lot of people out of town coming, especially with the youth sports.
Yep.
Are we, and maybe the Collins Center will include this question, but are we going to have a question where we ask our town residents, what are you going out of town to go and to take advantage of? You know, if there's the ninja class for your kids or the painting class for yourself, knowing what other things in other communities that we could, that have in this community?
I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea with that. I think one of the things for us is we were looking at, to your point, we have a lot of non-residents utilize our facilities and programming. So with a non-resident section, those questions are different and it's more specific. And then one of the questions we ask towards the end is what town do you live in? Just so we have that demographic now, we can see how many are answering from a certain, whether it's Amherst or Pelham or Granby, who we know may not have a Rec Department or may not have certain programs within that community. So I don't think that's a bad thing to write down and request that they do because that would give us feedback on why they're going somewhere else and how we could incorporate. that here to keep them here in town.
Keep the money in town, yeah.
Or even further to that, what, what programs, this for for non-residents, what programs does your town not currently offer that you wish that they did that you would come to Belchertown for?
Right, right. So, I think that would work for ones that already have a rec department, like Granby doesn't have a rec department, they have a GAA, which is a parent-run volunteer board. So, I know a lot of people working there and knowing people that live there, they just will look at our website, because there's no option outside of the the basic sports or traditional sports unless it's run through the school as a club. So, I think that is a good point, and that's something we easily can incorporate too.
Not so fast, I don't subscribe to that theory. Why do we care about what other communities are doing or not doing when it relates to our tax dollars?
Because they're, because if if these are revenue generating, then we're going to get some of that revenue.
I think she's asking if they're going to Amherst to do this art class, can we get that function here to provide it for our community without them going out of town? But I get what you're saying, that's why we ask non-resident, what what draws you to Belchertown, why do you come here? And once you're here, what do you utilize? Do you go to restaurants, do you use the gas stations? Because to your point, that helps the local businesses if people are coming to use certain facilities or come to do programming and then they leave and go to McCarthy's or they go to any, you know, Antonio's Pizza or whatever afterwards, that's keeping some of the business in town from outside coming in. And we've gotten some feedback on certain avenues that people do that, but that on the non-resident side, that's what we ask them, just to see what they are utilizing when they are in Belchertown, if they do come here.
That's fine about what they're utilizing, but what would they utilize, I'd put more stock in what the Belchertown residents want first.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but I mean, if if there's somebody in Granby that is willing to come here and pay money and give us some revenue, I mean, I'd want to know about it. I'd want to know what their interests are.
I guess if it's a program we're not currently offering, I would like to see how a resident from Granby's response would align with the Belchertown responses. If there's a program, and I'm not going to try to guess what that program would be, but if if we see a lot of Belchertown residents that want it and somebody from Granby also says, yeah, I'd I'd go for that, it's just another reason to consider it. Because I do think getting people to Belchertown has always been a goal to try to support local businesses. Once they're here, they stop at the gas station, they stop at the convenience store. With any luck, they'll go to the concession stand, maybe hit our local restaurants, you know, so those are the things we would want. But I agree.
You don't feel like we're getting any people from Granby or where surrounding communities already?
We probably are, and you know, let's let's try to continue with that. But I agree, there would have to be some alignment with Belchertown residents before we implement a new program, because we have to evaluate the cost. There has to be, you know, you know, these programs should break even if not, you know, make a little money for the recreation department for maintenance and upkeep. So, we have to have enough participants, that's that's key.
I mean, we could always do a resident one first, see that, and do the non-resident at a separate time, just to get that side of things. To your point, focus on our residents, what their their focus is in that, and then ask those questions, but then still have a separate one go out at a later time for non-residents, just to see what draws them here, so we know, hey, they're coming to town for this avenue and and that. And we have some of that data for who signs up and on the rosters and the registrations, but we don't know if they're just coming here for what reason. Is it because it's not offered in their town? Is it because they have the avenue and feel it's it's better run? Is it the price point of it? Is it because they have friends? So, there's a lot of different pieces to that that just help us facilitate certain programs. The sports programs here in town are for Belchertown only, everyone else has their their own unless there's an outlying circumstance, school of choice, or a community reaches out and is struggling with certain things. We kind of have this unwritten agreement through the communities around us to try to provide what's best for certain kids, but once again, to Ed's point, it's about our community first and what the needs and and wants are, you know, with the programming, the facilities, spaces, etc.
I'll tell you what, write the write the report however you want, right? But at the end of the day, Belchertown interests have to come first in this in this community, right? If you want external communities input and, you know, shaping part of it, yeah, but like, we can't find ourselves in a spot where pick your surrounding community says, oh, this is what we really want to see, our community won't do it, Belchertown should do it.
All right, no, I get it, yeah, no, but Belchertown's definitely, you know, that input and that data is is the data we're going to compare and see what they want first and foremost, rather than, you know, what the the response may be from the non-resident that fills it up. Just gives us more data to to look at, is what that ultimately does.
Very good, sir.
You know, it doesn't make sense to try to send two different surveys out, because it goes back to survey burnout, and if we don't collect the data, then we don't have the choice to ignore the data. So, I guess if we have it and we decide it's not something we want to follow through with, we just table it and.
I expressed my concerns, write it however you want to write it.
Right.
I'm intrigued by this idea that Granby doesn't have a rec department.
They do not, they have the like a parent-run board where their GAA, there's a couple of communities surrounding us that that's the setup for their their community in town, so they're very limited to some extent on how many programs that they have or that they can offer, and that's mostly at the youth level. I think a lot of the other demographics with adults.
Overpaying your money. How can we capitalize on this piece of information? Sorry, one thing at a time.
So, that everybody's on the same table. We, part of this study, this grant-funded study through the Collins Center is to look at opportunities to regionalize these services. Belchertown's the the hub.
Right.
So, if Granby doesn't have a rec department, you know, does it make sense to do some? So, it is all relevant.
Yeah.
But again, it's, you know, we have the opportunity to say what we do with that data once we collect it, so.
Very good.
Yep.
Thanks, Cal. Appreciate your time as always.
For that that one question, do you want to leave it open-ended for like the facility and the open space, or do we want to list certain, like, you know what I mean, like out of the open space, what do people may look for, an additional multipurpose court, more pickleball, more basketball, or do we leave that open-ended and see what comes in and then take that data? Because I mean, in one way, once again, you are limiting it to one, and that mindset's already there, and another, you open-ended, you could get some very far-fetched responses.
I like open-ended, I mean, I see something on this list that I would have put in in under open-ended that's not on the list, so.
Yep. Okay, that's fine.
What about like a hybrid, like?
Put other at the top of the list, at the top.
Will it be they can choose multiple?
Yeah, on that one, it'd be multiple, they could rank it, and that was one of the questions, and that'd be a question with Steve and the Collins Center, is when you lay this out, we're going to have open-ended, but also if people can rank them, if they're in order, how would they rank them, just so we can get that feedback on what our community's looking for, for certain space or what what their mindset is with that. So, yes, I would have them rank them.
Can I ask one more money question? Because that's like our favorite topic right now. For non-residents, will there be a question, I don't know if you're asking about money at all inside of income local, will there be a question that says, would you be willing to pay more for these services?
We could put that in there, I think they kind of know they pay more, because there's a non-resident fee already attached to everything. Well, right, but we can adjust that, and I, to your point, we can ask it, but I don't think, from my experience, I don't think even if we we raise that and looked at that in the future, that that would be a deterrent, because we've also put in some late fees to make sure programs would run, and that hasn't deterred people from just saying, oh, let's pay the late fee, it's fine.
We've all talked about that, should have, oh, I got a late fee, that's a problem.
Yeah, right, so, to your point, I don't think it's a bad question, but I, from past practice and knowledge, I don't think it's a, it's not a game changer for them, they'd still pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it would be for some folks, but I suspect for most, it would not. I have heard from some people that many of our, especially our youth sports and activities are much more affordable than other towns, so, it could be a possibility.
Do you have any answers to your questions?
I do, thank you.
Very good.
We can't wait to see the results.
Yep.
We'll be back.
We'll see before it goes out.
Five B, request to amend the charge and change the name of the Belchertown State School Buildings and Grounds Committee. Steve, what is going on here? All right, so, starting on page thirty-seven of your packet, there is a redlined document. The State School Buildings and Grounds Committee is asking for some minor revisions to their committee charge, starting with the a name change. They no longer want to be referred to as the State School Buildings and Grounds Committee, they just want to be the Buildings and Grounds Committee. They want to expand their scope to other properties in Belchertown that are controlled by the town. And, which should be obvious, they just want to make sure that it's stated that the properties have to be within the town of Belchertown, the boundaries. And they've also proposed some changes to the membership, going from a nine-member committee down, they want to have a range five to seven. We've seen that with some of the other committees, it gives them some flexibility. And they've eliminated some of the criteria for joining the committee as well. So, that's in response to trying to keep a full committee functioning. And then they clarified how positions will be filled through advertising and recommendations. So, right now, this committee has been focusing its efforts on the Tadjo School. We received a grant earlier this year to conduct a feasibility, late last year, I'm sorry, to conduct a feasibility study for the best reuse of the building and also to do a needs assessment. We have an RFP out right now for a consultant to come in and do that work, and the committee is trying to determine what's going to be the next step after they're done with Tadjo. We don't know how long that's going to take. The feasibility study, we would assume we'd have wrapped up by the end of the fiscal year. There may be recommendations that need to be implemented, there may be many more months of conversations around that building, or we may find that it's a once and done and they're going to be looking for another building to tackle. Right now, we have other buildings in town, most of them have been surplus, and we already have plans for them, so we're not putting those on the table. For example, Franklin School, I'm working on an RFP now for a sale on that building. Six and Eight Berkshire Avenue, we're working to determine a path forward, which is likely going to result in another RFP being issued for those buildings. So, we don't really have a crystal ball on what's next, but they just wanted to expand their their area of jurisdiction so that when something is ready or needs to go in front of them, that we can allow them to do that. Well.
I don't know, the chair of the committee, he has anything to say?
Oh, Rick, is there anything you want to add?
He's talking, but we can't hear him.
Can you turn the volume on for the television?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
I can hear you now.
I can't hear you guys.
No. Can you hear us now?
Good, yep. Basically, I just wanted to add that our group is really just there to identify a property, figure out its highest and best use, and then from there, we make recommendation to other departments. So, effectively, all we really do is identify, or I should say, find and identify the property and then try to hand it out to whoever would have to go to to be developed. So, that's the reason why we basically want to expand our area from just the grounds, the the school grounds to the town. And the reason why we also were looking to have a decrease in membership is, we're basically right about their membership as it, so, effectively, we're trying to get it where it where it should be described and conform it to it, and then we're also trying to expand our duties to look at other properties.
Let's start with you.
I have nothing further to add. I've sat through all of the conversations about changing the charge, so, and I'm on the committee, so.
Oh, you're on the, all right. So, for me, at first glance, it doesn't make sense.
No?
No, I'm not tracking them.
What do you mean?
The, I understand the original purpose of this, and it had a finite shelf life, was the State School Buildings and Grounds. So, what other properties even come to mind where, like, this would be useful?
There aren't any right now, like, but like, say, the Cold Spring comes offline, like, how are we going to tackle that building or any other facility in town? I think that's like where, you know, I don't even know why it was the state school, I think it was just because they were focused on the, when we put the committee together, that's, we were focused mainly on Tadjo and Six and Eight. I don't think there was any more thought put in to why it was only going to be in that area.
Because we've also got the situation now with the state school. Effectively, right now, what we're working on is, is that and the other buildings that are on the site, either some of them are already occupied or the remainder ones are probably going to have to be razed and something else developed. So, we want the opportunity to be able to go and find properties that are not in production right now for the for the town and return them back to their tax tax rolls. And by expanding this, we'll be able to do it, otherwise, we're very limited to the geographic area of the state school.
I mean, the other thing is, I mean, they wrote the grant, right? The committee wrote the grant, so, you know, right now, we have a grant manager, but if we didn't have a grant manager, then this committee could help, I mean, identify grants and put them into, you know, I want to focus on some of the work that we already had put in for a grant last year that sort of fell apart and we have to rescind it, but it's still in that general scene area, but doesn't mean that at some point in the future, it wouldn't expand the scope. So, I think this would just give the group, whomever the membership of that group would be in the future, the ability to do that.
So, does it sound like there's a need today for it?
I mean, I think it would be good for the members to have some sort of like clarity on like what it is that they're doing and like a roadmap for the future, even though right now, they're solely focused on Tadjo. So, and I think finning the structure more in line with what the membership is makes a lot of sense, too.
Nicole, Whitney, any thoughts?
I'm just curious to know what Steve thinks. I mean, is this something, if if we approved these changes, would this be helpful to you?
Well, the committee's been helpful. As Jen mentioned, they applied for this grant to do the feasibility study, and I know we have a grants manager position filled, but it's part-time. And certainly, Allison's not going to be able to pursue every grant that every department has previously done, or committee for that matter. So, when we have a group of people that are are actually going out there, getting the funding and logging wins, I think, you know, we we keep them going. I'm not sure what the concern is with them expanding their their geographical area, but if there is concern about that, we could certainly just add a caveat that it would be as authorized by the select board, so that there's no automatic expectation that any vacant building would be theirs to to have planning rights over.
And it's not, like, right now, right? Like, right now, like, we're prioritizing specific buildings and getting the input from Steve and the now the new capital improvement, like, what isn't, I mean, so like, I I see these, and Rick is also on the capital, we should say that, he's also on the capital improvement. So, I think he's been the one who's been pushing the group to think about outside of the state school property, because there might be grant opportunities on other buildings that are unrelated to, you know, fixing the entire building, but like, maybe a building needs such and such an improvement, and maybe because we're working on all these grants that we know that we're able to build a grant or apply for something, because we've built the knowledge inside the group.
And just for my clarification, so the purpose of this committee is mostly to look at properties that the town already owns and to, I think...
at properties that the town already owns and to, I guess, its explore viability, so to make them better. Is it also, in some cases, to sell them, and does that include parcels of land?
Uh, it could be.
And so if there were things like that, the town identified in the future, that could be helpful.
So the select board has the final, well, I shouldn't say final. Depending on the property, the size of the building, the value of the building, the value of the vacant property, in some cases, the select board have the final say to surplus property. Other times, it takes a town meeting vote. It also depends if the property was taken by tax title or some other means. So these are all things that potentially, a committee like this could be part of that decision-making process, make recommendations. I don't want to jump too far ahead, but part of my report tonight was to talk about an initiative that I'm beginning. We have about 195 parcels of land in Belcher Town that are owned by the town of Belcher Town. And I want to convene the town planner, conservation agent, the DPW director, our assessor, our town treasurer-collector, and go through those properties and determine which ones make sense to keep, what the value of them is for open space, access, future expansion, you know, whatever criteria you come up with, and make a recommendation back to the board to surplus those properties to get them back into the tax rule. We have a difficult budget season ahead of us, and it's only going to continue into the future, and I think the more properties we can get back into the tax rules, the better. So I always bring a prop when I, you know, do these things, this is, this represents 195 properties. So stay tuned on that, because I'm going to be starting that as soon as possible. Bringing revenues back into this town is obviously a priority of mine right now. So how that committee would fit in this conversation, I guess we can talk about that a little bit further. Maybe they're part of the review process.
Right, because they could be a help to you with reviewing the 195 properties, but not necessarily making the decisions.
Right. The decisions either have to come back to the select board or town meeting.
We would more or less take a look at the properties and then come back to the select board with a sheet that says, we've looked at such and such properties, our opinion is that we could do this, this, and this, and only then would we be able to go forward. We wouldn't have, as we take a half dozen properties or whatever and just do it, we would concentrate on probably the most opportune properties that can return to the tax rules. So it's, our whole situation is to search and identify. And then after that, we find a purpose, and then we try to find a place to put it, so that we can move on to the next property. So it's, we don't do, we aren't recommending development per se, you know, we're saying, you know, you need to spend a budget such. We just want to be able to look at the property, see what's there. If it needs feasibility study, we go for additional grants. Every, everything that we're trying to do is with non-budget money. So we're looking at third-party grants to fund. So that's really all we want to do. We're here to assist.
Thank you.
I get it, so it's not, it's not so much changing this committee, it's repurposing this committee.
Yeah, basically.
That's a good way to put it.
That is a good way to put it.
It sounds like they want to work a little harder.
Oh, Rick does. That's why he's in the chair.
Can't do that. So is this going to make your life easier, Steve?
Yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Does it make the select board's life easier?
If we have to go to town meeting with 30 properties that we want to sell, and we have a committee that says they review them in favor of the article, then I think it'll help. Absolutely.
Well, if you think it'll be more efficient, then sure.
It'll give me another place to delegate work, too, and it's always a good thing.
Another motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the request to amend the charge and the name of the Belcher Town State School Buildings and Grounds Committee to the Belcher Town Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, everybody. You have a good evening.
Do we want to change the membership level, too?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, I said change the charge. Oh, that's not the membership level. Start over?
No, we just changed the name. We just need to revamp the membership.
Let us have the rest of the changes, I guess.
Okay.
Do you want to include something about the authorization from the select board, or do you just want to leave it as this?
What would you prefer?
Just leave it as this.
It says all recommendations will be presented to the select board or chosen town governing body for approval.
Or get the final say and everything.
It might seem that way, Rick, but no, that's not the case.
Alright, Nicole.
I agree.
Can that be a separate motion, the number?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we authorize the Belcher Town Buildings and Grounds Committee to have a makeup of committee members, sorry. I move that we approve the change to the charge of the Belcher Town Buildings and Grounds Committee member makeup from nine people to five to seven-member committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, bye now.
Five C. Steve, what do you want to say about this one?
Well, I received correspondence from Verizon that they are looking to expand hyper-optic service into underserved and unserved areas of Belcher Town.
Please tell me it's me.
So I don't have an actual map, but they were looking for a letter of support. Essentially, it's FiOS that they want to expand, which I am in favor of. This could have been handled in my office administratively, but I felt that something this important and the benefits to our, especially our underserved community, was important enough that the board should have a say in it, so it's a pretty simple ask, just, you know, do we support it or not, and have the chair sign the letter.
May I ask a question? How, are we able to ask them what they consider underserved or not served? And if they're going to do it, can they, can they try to get to everybody? Because I think we have, monopoly's not the right term, but I think we have near, very close to only one supplier for our services.
I can find out, sure.
Probably make some people feel like they have more options.
Uh huh. Alright, is there a motion for five C?
I move we authorize the chair to endorse the letter of support for the Verizon-FiOS broadband expansion in Belcher Town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five D, review goals and objectives.
Okay.
How much time do we have, Steve? You got a couple hours?
No, I'm going to go through it fast, unless you think there's a lot of questions, but this is just an update, so it's not the, it's not the end-of-the-year review, or is it the beginning-of-the-year setting of goals and objectives? This is just a heads-up on where things are. So that starts in your packet on page 43. This is a bit of a combined report, because you had also asked for a report on the DLS recommendations, and since they're all contained within this document, they kind of run together. So the communications plan development is still ongoing. We now have a communications manager, and that's been working, she's been working closely with the communications committee, so I think that that's something we'll see in the near future.
By the way, the, I've seen tremendous support for the web presence. A lot of people find it very helpful, not only the website, but it's the, you know, here's today's meetings in Belcher Town, right? So it's super helpful, and, you know, all the meetings are out there, which is great.
Yeah, I agree. I've been able to actually see how the presentation on the homepage is for meetings, and it does make things much easier to find. I'm not going to go over every item, because I know you have a good understanding of what has been accomplished, but the go-to-meeting experience, I don't know if Esther had already logged the meeting in before you got here, but when you turn the computer on now, the home screen that comes up will have icons on it, and you just simply click on your room, and it takes you right to the room, and you just click start meeting, and you're done. So that is fantastic, because we have suffered trying to get meetings started with different meeting rooms and wrong meeting rooms and everything else, so I'm very grateful to see that happen. So that was communications personnel. The job description review grant application was denied this year. We weren't eligible due to the fact that we received a grant last year for HR work. So we're going to reapply next year. As positions become vacant, we look at them, and if there's any modifications that need to be made, we're making them. As part of the human services study, if there's changes that are going to be necessary, we're going to have that as part of the contract with Collin Center. The same for the financial review, that's ongoing. If you recall, that was on last year's list, but it stalled due to some personnel changes and personal matters. So that's really the highlights under personnel, budget, and financial. So DLS number five, the structural deficit, as you're all well aware, we're dealing with that right now. Item six and eight had to do with the capital planning policy committee. We do have a committee, they're functioning, they're meeting. They have looked at a tremendous amount of data. They were able to break it down into year one. The next four years have not been categorized yet, but they're in the list, so they're focusing on year one, because we need that now for the budget. They have a shortlist developed, and they're going to be ranking that and then preparing a final report for the select board. Once they're done with that, they're going to go back and start looking at years two through five and get those ranked as well and sorted out, so they're, they're doing We've hired a grants coordinator. Most of these are ongoing. Under conservation, a few other items have been put on hold, simply because the state is revising the wetlands regulations, so it didn't make sense to try to change our local violating regulations in the middle of a state rewrite. But I do know Sarah has been spending her time working on the MCRT, the rail trail. Today, she was working on an application for a trails grant for further design and review. So she's traded a few things off here, but everything that's on the list is still relevant. You know, the Jingers property, we closed on that, that can come off in the spring when we go back to this. The fire department, most of their items are complete or ongoing. I think the big lift right now is the hazard mitigation plan, the committee has been meeting. They're working on the documents, they're going to start doing some public outreach pretty soon, so it's coming along there as well. Living quarters is still ongoing, Pathfinder's been pounding nails, and they will continue to do so till it's done, so I would hope that sometime this calendar year, we'll be making that change. They are working with the library on planning for active threats. We are working through the funding for the SAFER grant. The chief will be part of a contingency going to Washington DC to advocate for more grants. Everybody's aware of what's going on with the federal grants, so I think that it's a very timely trip. He's been working with the University of Massachusetts to develop an auxiliary program where you can get students to work with our paramedic firefighters and help fill shifts and be another set of hands on our medical calls. So we think by March 1st, that program will be in place, and he'll have people in the Under recreation, you heard tonight about the survey. We're going to be holding off on distributing that until we do the larger survey. Kyle has been working with the DPW and Conservation about the town beach parking lot. They do have a CPC grant application, and they're going to be filing a 319 wetlands grant with DEP. We've been looking at the area of the family center. Last year, we planted it to a pollinator garden temporarily. I think right now, we're going to look to level that area a little bit further and plan for another multipurpose area for soccer and field hockey and across those kinds of sports. The area where the old tennis courts used to be has not been, there's no plan for that yet. In the, you know, leveling that area and planting it to grass is not an end-all. If there's a better use for it, then we just, you know, switch up. Under economic development, that's ongoing. I've been following the BREEZA development with the EDIC very closely. We should start seeing some activity at the powerhouse. The demolition's going to start any time now. A lot of people will be disappointed, but they're not going to use explosives to knock the smokestack down, it's just going to come down brick by brick, and won't be much of a show, but be kind of like watching the grass grow, I guess. The EDIC has been working on parcel D. I've been following that. If you recall, they are asking for some town land in the back to square it off, so they can make it more developable. They did receive a grant this year, they've been doing survey and preliminary design. So we may actually see, you know, some activity there, not development activity, but permitting and, you know, final design. The plan for Franklin School, I'm going to get an RFP together. I contacted Council today, they're going to throw a quick document together, and we'll get it advertised for a sale and get that off the books. We finally got the police radios out of the building. Well, the equipment might still be there, but they're no longer functioning, no longer And we're still working on Six and Eight Berkshire Ave. I think in, over the next month or two, we'll start to see some activity there, either with an RFP or otherwise. In planning, the master plan updates, that's just been ongoing. The interactive webpage for the master plan and the master implementation matrix, we've just requested another grant through the planning commission to do that work. I don't know when that will be announced. The MVP II program has been ongoing. If select board member Lissard Pearson was here, she could provide an update on that, but that committee's been doing a lot of work. Most recently, they attended the Sports Haven Mobile Home Park owners' meeting and received a lot of feedback on various topics. And housing affordability has been a focus of Doug's for quite a while, you know, goes right back to the BREEZA project. Under the DPW, I think pretty much everything there is either ongoing or complete. I think sometime this spring... I think sometime this spring, Linda will be kicking off the complete streets designation process. I know it's still on our radar, we talk about it from time to time, as well as becoming a Tree City USA. I think the implementation of the EV fleet assessment report is probably up in the air with the federal government grants and objectives, the changes there. Under MIS, the servers have been moved, security audit's been complete. DLS item number 12, developing a refresh cycle scope and cost, that's also complete. When I last spoke to Kevin, he said everything's on a four-year cycle barring any changes in budgets. And the project to install a redundant fiber loop for communications, that contract was signed last week, so that will start any time now. So he's made good progress. Sports Haven, the good news there is we opened up bids last week. We did get bids for the scope of work that fall within the budget. We essentially broke the project up into two phases. The first phase is going to allow us to install the water system, the force main, the storage tank, the generator, the sewer lines within the roadway area, in the restoration of the roadway, as well as a lift station. Phase two will be the leach field, the septic tanks, the holding tanks, and all the sewer connections to the mobile homes. So with phase one, the water will be connected to the mobile homes, but we didn't have enough money to do both, but it was a necessity that the roadway be restored after we finished digging it up. So we were able to get everything under the pavement so it won't have to be disturbed again. And we're going to continue to research and solicit grants, but again, there's a lot of uncertainty right now with what's going to be available for grants. So that is a monumental bit of news. This has been going on for nearly 30 years. So we've made great progress in the last few years, even, you know, prior to my tenure in this chair. We always continue to advocate for more unrestricted aid, chapter 70, chapter 90 funds. I think the legislators know that when the phone rings and I'm on the other end, it's going to be my first and last question and everything else is in between. I have not done anything with the recall by audits that's on hold. Quite honestly, I haven't had time and I didn't think it was a priority at this point. Mini Fenway, I still need to begin that process and I'm not sure I'm going to get to that before this document cycles out and we create a new one. The government study committee, which is a DLS recommendation number one, that is on hold until the DLS completes the financial audit. The financial audit will be a roadmap for that future work, so they need to go in order. And again, I was expecting the financial audit would be done by now. The police department, they always continue to make good progress. They still have their accreditation, they still do a lot of community outreach, they're working well within their budgets, and the regionalization project with Wilbraham has been complete. As a matter of fact, Whitney was at the contract signing when we regionalized, so it was a good day and that has worked well. For the most part, I think all the bugs are worked on of it. The board of health is active, the assessors are active. The FY25 reevaluation is complete. I think that data was submitted when we did the recap. If not, I can try to get it to you. And we've been doing some other work, renewing host agreements, host community agreements with marijuana establishments. We did receive the grant for the charging stations, the electric vehicle charging stations at Town Hall. Six and eight Berkshire Avenue, we thought was off the list, but it's back on. I know I mentioned it earlier. And we've been working on the senior and veterans tax work-off abatement program evaluation report, so I think that'll become a better future meeting as well. So if there's no questions, or if there's questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions from the board? Sounds like you've been making some good progress and some roadblocks along the way too, so thanks for keeping the board apprised.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I can't say enough about the employees and the department heads that support me. You know, without them, none of this would have been possible, but they are working extremely hard to try to keep us afloat. They very rarely say they can't. It's always a can-do attitude in how soon, so I look forward to continuing working with all of them, but I do have to give them the credit for these accomplishments, so.
Awesome. So that pretty much encompasses number six, right? Maybe not.
Is there anything that you didn't talk about?
Yeah, anything you want me to bring up? I can start on number six. Let's see, we talked about the hazard mitigation planning. I did have representatives of the New England Small Firm Institute come in, we talked about long-term planning. They share my vision and I think the board's vision of community space. Talked a lot about trying to make that a more welcoming area and having more offerings for people that would make it more of a destination. So that's encouraging. I did talk to Representative Saunders and Senator Olivera about a legislative visit and I'm still waiting for some dates from them, you know, our meeting schedule, you know, just waiting to get that on the books. Yeah, I talked about most of this. We are working to update the website to comply with recent Cannabis Control Commission regulation changes. That's something that the town planner and our communications manager are working on. We did talk to, Joanne and I did talk to an insurance broker about the cost of our health insurance through Hampshire County Insurance Group Trust. I guess I'll give you the nickel tour. The insurance industry in general is reeling. They're all seeing very large increases in plan rates. I know the, I was waiting for the GIC to come out to state plan, but the other ones that I've heard about are anywhere from 18 to 22 percent increase and, you know, that's the same ballpark we're in, 18 percent on HMOs and 22 percent on PPOs. So it's not good. Most people that have looked at our plan say the rates are pretty good. The only recommendation that I've seen, that seems to be consistent, is that in the next year or two, we should be looking at some plan changes, which I know the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust is looking at, so that's yet to be seen. Right now, it looks like we're in a holding pattern. If you haven't already, I completed the one-hour mandatory conflict of interest training. I'm not happy about it. I'm going to be talking to whoever I can. It's advertised as one hour, it really takes about two. It's ridiculous. You can't click on the screens fast enough to do it in one, so I don't know where they come up with that, but...
Is this an annual, which is every...
Yeah. But something needs to give because, quite frankly, our employees have enough work to do. They don't need to be sitting in front of a computer for two hours clicking on conflict of interest training. They need to condense it and make it more manageable. So I say that publicly because I do intend on pursuing it. Been meeting with the finance committee. I've been meeting with some of the finance committee members separately to go over some of the budget issues. I did attend the wayfinding committee meeting, I will leave that if you're going to...
Sure.
Okay. The Tadjo building, RFP's out, I told you that. I did meet with Pathfinder Superintendent, as well as our superintendent. We had a very good talk and the good news is that Eric Duda, the Pathfinder Superintendent, will be at the finance committee meeting Thursday to talk about his budgets, give us a little bit of an advanced preview of what to expect. And last week, we also had the annual Sports Haven Mobile Home Park meeting here in this building. It wasn't as well-attended as I would have liked, but we still had a good group and we went over a lot of information, so stay tuned there. If there's no questions, I'll just move right into updates. Still waiting on the elevator contractor to mobilize. The last time I received an update, they were ordering parts for the work and I told them, we can't take the elevator out of service until they have all the parts in hand, so there's probably not going to be a lot going on there. The motor and the fire engine, engine two is complete and the truck is back in the station and I already talked to you about my plans for surplus property.
I have a question. The Tadjo tower removal? Somebody told me that you guys have a fun thing to do with the scrap.
Oh, sure. I don't know, it was...
I haven't heard you mention it.
Yeah, maybe Linda wants to talk about that, but apparently there's a group that wants to use parts of it for a sculpture. Linda, do you have any information?
I'm here, I'm here. Oh, I have a sworn neck, so I'm, anyway, yeah, so we contracted, I think it was a cultural muscle that we, I believe, that has done some sculpture there already and, yeah, it was a great idea to try to utilize some of the scrap metal for a potential sculpture. So I will be working with them when I contact the contractor to move in and we'll connect there and see how we can move that ahead.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a fun idea.
Awesome. Any mail items catching everybody's interest this week?
I have a question. In the outgoing mail, I saw a letter of support for the Lake Wallace Wood Trail. How many trails grants are we submitting? I know Sarah was submitting some for the review and the design. Was it three total?
I think Doug is working on one. Sarah was going to file two, but we combined them into one and we reduced the scope on the second half to try to bring it into a more manageable piece, so two grant applications.
Thank you.
So actually, I want to bring up something in the incoming mail. If I can just read it. So there was an email from one of the firefighters, Kevin Gerard, to the chief about a call that took place back on January 13th. So on that day, there were five firefighters on shift and four got called to a medical call, and I'll read the email in a second, leaving one firefighter at the station. That firefighter got called out on a second call and another one came in to relieve that one position, so there was one firefighter in the fire station. And so the email reads, "This afternoon on January 13th, 2025, Group Four responded to a medical emergency. The call came in as a five-year-old having a seizure. Upon arrival to the scene, A1 crew determined the patient to not be breathing and in respiratory arrest. The child was immediately treated by the on-duty shift members. Due to the amount of members who were on shift and on scene, the patient was successfully treated." So you had two firefighters, one doing ventilation, one doing suction, and then two serving for peripheral needs, so truly all four were needed. And the child did regain some respiratory effort. The group, under great stress, performed professionally, which was a big factor in successfully getting the patient to the hospital in better condition than originally found. Without our staffed shift, the outcome could have possibly been different. Thank you, Kevin Gerard."
Thank you. And then, see, I have also an outgoing mail, item six, the town accountant, the compensation agreement for the town clerk. I believe that it's missing the word stipend in there, I didn't see it. Oh, it is a stipend. Right, but it wasn't in the letter. Oh. Okay. I will check that, but it was paid out as a stipend. Great, yep.
And was that for the entire clerk's office or was that for one individual?
It was just to cover the overtime for the...
For one individual?
For one individual, for two elections, it was 97 hours, I believe, is the total. So it was quite a bit of time. When I did talk to the town clerk, she said there are no federal elections being held in 2025, so we won't have to take this up again until '26, which is a midterm election for the House and the Senate. Very good.
More incoming mail question, and now my computer will let me open it to see the person's name, but there was, someone reached out to us asking if we'd be willing to make April National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do we get these requests very often and is there reason not to?
I think it's in an upcoming meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be on the next agenda because it takes a vote. We do this every year, so they submit a request to have a, what do we read it?
Proclamation.
The proclamation for it to be approved by the board and then designate the month for whatever purpose.
So when it comes through to the Select Board General inbox, it's forwarded to the chair, chair adds it to the agenda?
I just...
All Steve?
Put it on, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so it'll be on next meeting.
Thanks.
Yep.
Great, board member reports. Nicole?
So I attended, one, two, three, four, five, six meetings in the month of January for Branding Belcher Town Committee. We are in the process right now of interviewing graphic designers. We've had three interviews to date, I think we've got one more to go, and they're all really impressive, really great ideas, and so I believe we'll be making a decision on that within the next week on who we're moving forward with graphic designer. January 8th, I attended the Board of Health meeting. January 9th, our tri-board budget meeting, I missed the last meeting, so I didn't get to report any of this. On January 15th, I met with Jacob Robinson, he's a Belcher Town resident, but he's also the director of the Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce. Jen connected me with him just as a meet and greet. On January 16th, Whitney and I both met with Jill Rossi and she gave us some FY26 budget education. That is it.
That's one-on-one.
Nice.
And I spent a week in Aruba.
She had to rub it in.
Whitney?
I, well, I did many of the things that Nicole did, but not six Branding meetings, that's impressive, thank you. The only thing that I will add is this past Saturday, I attended the Clap Memorial Library's Take Your Child to the Library event. It's the most packed I've ever seen a library, it's a great event, and I feel like I've done so much more and I can't think of one thing.
Awesome. Jen?
Lisa went to the MMA big conference and I was looking forward to hearing more about her time there, but we won an award.
Yeah.
Was that your thunder? Were you going to talk about the award? I'm so excited about our website award. As many folks know, that was really a long process and many kudos to the Communications Committee for that and to our HR Director for nominating us to the MMA. You want to say something?
Yeah, I want to make sure that we also acknowledge our IT Director, Kevin Hannan, for his efforts on this. for his efforts on this. The town clerk, Terry Cameron, worked diligently in that committee, and Donald Lucignan at the DPW spent a lot of time with that committee as well, so...
Long road.
It was a very long road. I'm very proud of that group. I think they all did a very good job, and to win an award is, you know, I always say we need to win, so at least we finally got one.
That was a win. I swear, you had to like drop, like scrape my jaw off the floor when I heard we won. It's amazing. I didn't go to all six branding meetings, so I'm so happy that you went to them all. I have now been pulled into the Wayfinding Project, which is a complimentary project to the Branding Project. So there's an organization there, StanTech, that's leading the charge there. So we had the kickoff, and we've had one additional meeting, and we're also gonna have bi-weekly meetings. So, very exciting. The scope and the radius of the Wayfinding, I don't want people to get like all excited about Wayfinding throughout the entire town, is limited in scope because it was a Massachusetts downtown initiative. So the radius is, it's part of the project, but it will be defined, and it will be out from the center, which is the common. So stay tuned for more information about that. I did attend the Amherst Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting with Lisa Stahl, our new cultural district manager, and we networked and rubbed shoulders with people, and we have lots of takeaways and lots of little things that we wanna start bringing back to work on, including, you know, possibly getting a hotel in town and things of that nature. So we're gonna do a lot of follow-up from that meeting. I also attended the Lamson Brook Board Meeting. Steve didn't really mention much about that, but I don't know what's happening with that, even though I attended the meeting. I did attend a meeting through the Mass DOT about the Mass Department of Transportation, about the Central Rail Trail, which, as you just heard, we put in an additional trails grant for that, so hopefully that project will keep moving along at a snail's pace, but hopefully we can keep that project alive. It's a big priority for the state, and they're gonna want, one of the things that came out of the DOT meeting was they really wanted to know that the town supported the project for the rail trail to come through town. So 15 miles of the Central Rail Trail, which runs the entire length of Massachusetts, we have 15 miles of it here in town. So it's a big project. It really should come. As Steve keeps mentioning, it should be a state project, but it's not. They're leaving it to the municipalities for the time being, so we'll keep working on that. I also went to the Historic Commission meeting. If folks didn't see the announcement or didn't see the sign, the Historic District Bylaw Committee met last week, and they approved the sign for our new Mexican restaurant that is opening...
Breaking news.
On the common where Christina's used to be, Masa Mexicana is coming to town. They put the sign out today, and they're gonna have a big announcement.
Do we have a date?
I don't know the date, but the sign's out there. It's very exciting.
See, I didn't notice that.
Yes, it's out there.
Yeah, it's pretty, it has a historical look to it, the sign does.
Yes, it needed to be approved by our district, so it has been through that process. And the last thing I have to say is that if you're thinking about running for our May Town Election, papers are out. When do they due back?
I don't know off the top of my head, but...
Because I couldn't find that in...
But they are available. People can pull papers at any time.
Is that something that our communications manager could put a post-up about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
The One Stop is also open. We're gonna have a meeting about that, and it's Black History Month.
All right.
Wow, yeah. First things first, you know, as everyone knows, we're getting into the heart of budget season, and I continue to work closely with the town manager. We talk about it just about every day, the upcoming budget. And I just wanna say thank you to Lisa, Nicole, Whitney, and Jen, right? You know, listening to your board reports tonight specifically, you know, this is what makes for an effective town government, all the different things that everyone's doing, it's really, it's really kinda cool to see it all come to pieces, you know? And the fact that there are five of us on this board, we're getting, we're getting a ton done. And as Steve mentioned earlier, it's really his department heads that get this stuff done for all of us. So even though Steve's with us every other Monday night, it's everybody else on the team that actually takes all these ideas that we're doing and makes them come to fruition. So I'll echo Jen's sentiment, the fact that we won a website award would have seemed unfathomable five years ago. So that's, that's pretty cool that the Communications Committee was that effective that quickly. And it's really nice to see the volunteers get on board and get things done. So that's my report for today. Any questions from the press? Very good. Number 11, please.
Question to return.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eight oh five.